Praise the Lord
Kattirukustothiram
We'll read again from Ephesians chapter 6, verses 10 to 12.
Ibesir kirudhan nirupum aramadiharam patthilirundhu panninandhamasana mudiyae.
Kadaisiaga ensa godariri karthariyilum avadi sathvathin vallamailum balapadungal, ningal pisasim tandrangaloodu edhithunirikke traanivul orklaagumbadi, devudi sarvaidhavarkathin tharitukollungal, eninil maamsatodum retthatodum alla, purithanangalodum, adigahangalodum, iprabanjathin andhagara loogaadhibadigalodum, vaanamandhalangalilulapolladha avigalin seynigalodum namakuporadukundu.
Finally, my brethren, be strong with the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armor of God that he may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil; for we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places.
Praise the Lord
Kattirukustothiram
The spiritual battle takes place at two levels.
Indha avikriyutham aanathu irundu nilavrangali nadibirugrathu.
The topic under which these Bible studies are being given is spiritual war.
Indha vedapadangal avikriyutham engradana thalipin kieedai namaknadibirugrathu.
This spiritual war takes place at two levels.
Indha avikriyuthangal aanathu irundu nilavrattil nadibirugrathu.
One is at a personal level.
Ondu thanipattamurayile.
Unless we learn how to fight our personal battles well, we will not be able to fight the next battle that we are going to see shortly about.
Eppadi namakuvirugrathana, andha thanipattayuttathai nammaal sayyamudiyavindu naam kattirukullada pathrathil, mattusallapugrathana, uruyuttathai nammaal sayyamudiyadu.
In general, all of us like to be happy.
Saadharanamaha, nambeelarmee, sandoshamai irukumbadi virmubhro.
We all like to come out of trouble as quickly as possible.
Namakkurukrathana prachinigalilirundhu, yavvalu sikhiramai, nambeelye varamudhimaha, ablu sikhiramai, beelye varamayarchikiro.
But in Christian warfare, we should understand that that's not the way to fight.
Anaal, kristvayuttakalathil appadiyella, namvittam sayyavindumendu, nam arindugulla vendu.
If you are always looking for deliverance, if you are always looking for happiness, if you are always looking for coming out of trouble, that's like running away from a battle.
Eppurudumai, urubidhalai vendumendu, eppurudumai, nam sandoshamai irukkavindumendu, eppurudumai, adi vegamai, namakkuvirugraporadhanagaliirundhu, nam beelye varavindumendu, nam virmbinaaal.
That's like running away from a battle.
Adu daan yuttathilirundhu oodi poovathai pol artamahum.
God is allowing our enemies to come to us for a certain reason.
Devan, namdriyasathirkalai, namadathil varumbadi, urukkaranathodu gudadan anumadikkira.
So without finding out what that reason is, we have, we should not be just waiting for deliverance.
Andha karanathikondubidikada pathrathil, vidudalekaka, nam kaathurukakoodaadu.
If I fall sick.
Udaanamaha, nan vyadi paduvinayaa.
There's a reason why God permits that sickness.
Andha vyadiyil devanenakhanumadithun, urunookam, urukkaranamundu.
It may be, I have done something wrong and God wants me to realize it and confess it.
Oruvelai, nan sela thavargalai seethirakkalaam, adainidri devanathil, nan ariki seyavindumere devan virmbalaa.
Or it may be that God wants me to build up my faith by fighting against the sickness.
Alathu, andha vyadiyodu gudanamporadi, edivisvasathai, na innum katteerupavindumendu, devan virmbalaa.
Or it may be that God wants me to realize the powers that are within me as I fight against the sickness.
Alathu, nanandhivyadiyodu guduttham sayyambodhu, enakkulla irukrathana, vallemagala, nan arindugollumbadiyaa, devanathai anumadikkilaam.
Or it may be that God wants me to get strong in the doctrine of divine healing as I go through the sickness.
Alathu, deviiga sugasattiyathle, innum naan belappurumbadiyaa, devanenai, indha vyadiil anumadikkilaam.
So there are many reasons why God permits a trial.
Aaginale, devaneyen, inidrayavakkiil, sodhini galanumirithiraa, unbedukku, anegu karanangalundu.
So without analyzing and finding out why such a trial is taking place in my life, if I keep always looking for a chance to come out of the trial, that's, that's a failure in Christian warfare.
Eppurudumai, enakkuvirugrathana, andhayuttangalin, andha karanathai, ariyadabatchathil, nan adisikiramaa, beelye varavindumendu, mayarchipenea, ahiil, indha kristva vakiil, yuttathile, urutholviyaayadi, enakkumudithivudugrathu.
These days when I pray for sick people.
Indhanakali, nan vyadiyasthara kaka, jebikumbodhu.
God is teaching me to change my prayer.
Inidray jabathai mauttumbadi, devanenakupadipikkira.
Instead of saying, "Lord, heal their sickness."
Andavare, ivridi vyadiyini susthamakumendu, jebikumbadilaa.
God is teaching me how to change that prayer and pray like this, "Lord, increase their faith so that they might be able to fight this battle and get the victory."
Andavare, ivridi yidja visvasathainum vartikappani, addanum mulamaha, ivravali, tamaduyuttathile, jay madukumbadi, ivralikkunum visvasathai vartikappadamendu chali, avralikkunan jebikumbadi, devanenakippadi, jabathai kattikodukkara.
So along with a prayer rebuking the sickness, this prayer is also made.
Vyadiyikadindugulugrathu maathramalla, adoodu gudai, indha jabumum nadibirugrathu.
So also in Christian warfare, we have to learn how to fight.
Adivannamaha, kristvayuttakalathil, nam eppadi porada vendumendu, naam kattirukullavendu.
Instead of always looking for deliverance, in order that we might stand in the battle and fight, we need a particular weapon.
Nam andhayuttathilirundhu, eppurudumai, poradi, adilirundhu, jay madukumbadiyaa, namakkuvurukkaruvigal avasiam.
A weapon.
Urukkaruvii avasiam.
That weapon was discovered by a man who was very weak in fighting his battles.
Andha yuttakkaruvii aanathu, tharaduyuttathile, poradakkunamudiyadu, alavirukkirundhu thana, urubelaveenanaaal, adukkandubidikkappattadu.
He was a man who once ran away from battle.
Andhamanidandham, yuttathilirundhu, oodi ponnavan.
But later on, he discovered this weapon.
Anaal, pirkaalathilo, avan indha karuvii kandubiditaan.
He was one of the disciples of Jesus.
Avan eswinn, seeshargali, uruvanaiyurukkaraan.
His name was Peter.
Avanidraye payar, Pedru.
He didn't like to suffer.
Avan paad anubivikke virmbavillai.
He didn't want Jesus to suffer.
Eswum paad anubivikke vendumendu, avan virmbavillai.
He thought he had the boldness to suffer if he had to.
Kandipaha, paad anubivikke vendumengradana, urusunnali varumayaa, akill, angia avanakkutthairi mirupunaa, avan nenaitaan.
But he ran away.
Anaal, narandathenavan oodi ponaan.
But later on, when he got filled with the Holy Spirit.
Anaal, pirkaalathilo, avan parasutthaviinall, nirappappattabodhu.
He got that mind to suffer.
Paad anubikkerathana, andhammanathu, avanakkuntaiyundhu.
See what he reads in first, writes in 1 Peter 4:1.
Avanennayidukranendu, ondu Pedru, naankamadikaram, ondhamasanaathile, ningalai parungal.
Ippeerikka, kristu namakaga, maamsathri paadubaddabadiyal, ningalum apripattasindi, ayyidamaha, tharitukollungal.
Forasmuch then as Christ had suffered for us in the flesh, arm yourselves likewise with the same mind; for he that had suffered in the flesh had ceased from sin.
He speaks of a weapon in the mind.
Avar manadilaiyurukrathana, urukkaruvii kuruthupesukkara.
So he says, "Arm yourself with this mind."
Siddhayi, ayyidamaha, tharitukollungalendu chalukkara.
So that means, it's a, he says, "Arm your mind with a willingness to suffer."
Aduridiyathum, ungalidraye sindhayi, paad anubikke kudidana, andha ennathodu gudidana, ayyathothodu, paad anubhingal.
Don't be afraid of suffering, don't run away from battles. Rather, ask God for this weapon, which is called a readiness or a willingness to face battles if it comes your way.
Paad anubhippadi, kandubayandu, oodumbadi, appudinigal aytapadavindam, maraha, paad anubikranthasindi, adakkuyathamaha, andha ayyaththi tharitukollungal.
Our forefathers in the early church, they all had this mind and this willingness to suffer.
Namdriyamutthumkaalathinsabailirukrathana, murpidakal, paad anubikumbadi, ayyathamulavralaa, irundharkal.
If you turn to Acts chapter 5 and read verse 41.
Apposelnadabidigalainthamadikaram, naarpatti vandhamasanaathirukkiningal vasipirulayaa.
When the disciples were released from the council after interrogation and after being beaten up.
Indha seeshargal, avrakal pidikappattu, adikappattu, visarunathayappattapirag.
We see how they were released.
Eppidi avrakal, vidudivikappattagalendu, nam kangro.
Verse 41.
Naarpatti vandhamasalam.
Avuridinamathukaaga, tangal avamana madivathiruke, pathanraaga, ennapattapadinaan, sandoshamai, aarushani, sangaththi, vittupurappattapoy.
And they departed from the presence of the council rejoicing that they were counted worthy to suffer shame for his name.
They were happy not because they were released and they were free, they were happy because they had the privilege to suffer for Jesus.
Avrakal viduviikappattabadinaal, angirundha, avrakal, beelyanupappattabadinaal, avrakal sandoshamadayevillai, maraha, paad anubikkeppadumbadi, avrakal sandoshamadindharkal.
It was a privilege for them to suffer for Jesus.
Esuukkaa, paad anubhivvai, avrakal, uruslakkyamai, karudinarkal.
So they were not afraid of the suffering.
Aaginale, avrakalai, paadukalai, kandu, bayappadavillai.
They called it a qualification, we have the worthiness to suffer for his name.
Anaal, maraha, avrakalathai, thakudhin, radikrakal, avrdenamathukaaha, paad anubikke thirukku, paathirarai, avrakal, paathiramendu chalappadukrakal.
So to suffer for Jesus, we need a worthiness.
Esuukkaa, paad anubikkeppadi, namakkuvuruk thakudhi avasiam.
So those who suffer for Jesus, these disciples say, they are lucky people, are fortunate people, are blessed people.
Aaginale, indha seeshargal, esuukkaa, paad anubikkeppadi, paathrowanglana bodhu, avrakal, thangalai, adishthasaligalaa, slakkyamendu, inneenarkal.
Saint Paul was once discouraged from going into Jerusalem.
Orumurai, parasutthapavil, pudiiris, erslamekupovathikthadaisidharkal.
And he said, "Don't break my heart." Those who hindered him said, "They are waiting to beat you up there." He said, "Don't break my heart and not only getting ready to be beaten and imprisoned, I'm ready to die for Jesus."
Avrakalai, parasutthapavil, thadaisidhavichanarkal, ningalangai, poogavindam, angai, ponaal, ningal, adipaduvirulayichanarkal, appudiparasutthapavil, channal, badilinavindam, ennay thadaisiavindam, ennihrudheyam, paad anubikkeppadi, avrakal, oodubudan, naanam, paad anubikkeppadi, ennay, bidungalendu channal.
He said, "I'm ready even to die for Jesus."
Esuukkaa, nan marikum ayyatamai, irukkreenendu channal.
So this was the mind that our forefathers had.
Indha ennathaidan, idhayi, sindhayi, than, namdriyamurpidakalum, vaitirundharkal.
Dear brother, dear sister.
Arumayana sagode, nee sagode.
If you are looking for a life without any suffering.
Urupadillada, madikku, uru ningal, uru vaki, virmbuviirulayaa.
This is not the right place for you.
Indhayadam, ungalakkiethedamalla.
But if you want to know how to suffer well.
Anaal, eppidi, nandaha, paadubaddavindumendu, ningal, ariyavirmbinaaal.
How to be happy to suffer?
Eppidi paad anubivikke, sandoshamai, iruppadendu, ningal, virmbinaaal.
How to grow through suffering?
Paadukalinbulama, eppidi, valaramudhimendu, virmbinaaal.
How to face suffering boldly?
Eppidi paadukalai, sandoshamai, anubivikke, virmbinaaal.
How not to be afraid of the adversary who comes to torment you?
Unney, unney vaadikkevirugrathana, eppidi, andha sathruvai, eppidi, edhirkavirmbinaaal.
Then you have come to the right place.
Appudiendal, ningal, vandhayadam, sariyanayadama, irukkrathu.
We need the mind of our forefathers.
Namdriyamurpidakalin, adhey sindai, namakkum avasiam.
Saint Paul told Timothy, "All those who want to live a godly life in this world will have to suffer persecution."
Parasutthapavil, chalukkara, timathik, kerdumbedhu, yarallam, devadesithathirukkutthangalai, upukodukkaraal, avrakal, indha ulagathil, paad anubikke vendumendu, chalukkara.
2 Timothy, chapter 3, verse 12.
Irundham timathayimundhamadikaram, panninandhamasalam.
Antim, kristi esuvukal, devabaktiyain, nadakamanatha, irukkari, yavarum, thunbappaduvargal.
This, this verse says, "If you want to become spiritual, there is no other way you have to suffer persecution."
Indha vasanam chalukrathu, ningal, avikkulaanavralaa, amaravindumeyaa, akill, veervariyeh, illai, ningal, thunbappadathaan, vendu.
You can't grow and not suffer.
Ningal, thunbappadadabadikku, valaramudiyadu.
So if you want to grow spiritually, you have to suffer, is what this verse says.
Ningal avikriyavathil, valaravindumeyaa, akill, thunbappadavindu, vendu, indha vasanam chalukrathu.
So the best way to face spiritual battles is not to run away or look for deliverance. If you want to grow, get ready to face the battle.
Aaginale, avikriyuthangali, ningal, meetcha, adinigal, edhikullavindumeyaa, akill, adikkandu, bayandho, adivittu, oodi poogradala, adilai, ningal, valaravindumeyaa, akill, paad anubikke vendu.
Ask God for a willingness to face battles.
Yuttathai, sandikumbadi, devaney, enakkhu, andhammanapuruvum, thithaarum, andhyuddhayithi thaarumendu, kielungal.
Return to 2 Timothy, chapter 2, and read verse 3.
Ningal, rinduttimathayimundhamadikaram, irundhamasanaathivasiipirulayaa.
Neem, esu kristukal, nalappochseevakana, thinganubavi, tandil, seevakam, bannigre, evanum, tannay, seevakam, edhivik, konduvanu, keetuvanai, irukkubadi, priripukkada, haluvilgalil, sekikulla, madam, meeluv, uruvan, malliyuttam, banninallum, sattatimbadipanna, urdhal, mudisutthapadaan, priya.
Thou therefore endure hardness as a good soldier of Jesus Christ.
So here it says, "To be a good soldier, you need the ability to endure hardness."
Ingeena, vasikiro, esu kristvin, nalappochseevakana, irukkavindumeyaa, akill, uruvan, thingay, anubivikke vendu.
In other words, you need to get your heart and your mind ready to face hard situations.
Mattavathigalichalapponaa, undrayuddhayithiim, manathim, kadinaamaan, sunnalegalai, edirkolla, ningal, ayyatham sayyavindu.
Remember, our adversary is a wicked person.
Namdriyasathuru, pulladavindu, ningal, nennevil, vaittukollungal.
He will plan wicked things against us.
Namakkuvirudamai, avan, pulladavigalai, thirmanikkira.
So we should get ready to face that wickedness and resist him.
Andha dunnarkanai, idirkumbadiku, naanamay, ayyatham seethugulla vendu.
God is not going to allow the enemy to unleash his wickedness on us.
Devan, namdriyadunmanthapulladavani, thannudriyadunmarkathai, nammeel, anupuppadi, anumadikkirathu, lai.
At the same time, we should not expect Christian life to be a life on a rocking chair.
Adiinayathil, namdriyakristva vaki aanathu, urusayindadugrath, naarkaliin, vaki, polirkavindumendu, nam edhirkulla kodaa.
We have to get our minds and hearts ready to fight our battles.
Namdriyathuthathai, naam, sandikumbadiyaa, namdriyammanathayim, namdriyiddhayithiin, naam, ayyatham seethugulla vendu.
In the army, literally.
Eduthukuriyae, indhaningal, ranuvath. Ranuvathai, parpirulayaa.
The training is very rigorous, very hard.
Avrakalkkukodukkuparugrathana, payichiyana, migamiga, kadinaamaa, irukkum.
Recently, a group of soldiers, army soldiers, had to jog about thirty kilometers in Chennai.
Sami bagalathil, muppadu seevakal, indha ranuvathil, veerisigrathana, veerakal, muppaduk, anegu kilometer dhuram, avrakal, oodavindithai, irundhu.
Thirty kilometers.
Muppadu kilometer dhuram, oodavindithai, irundhu.
And on the way, about fifteen, twenty kilometers, some of the soldiers fell down.
Padanayindhaladu, ivruthuk kilometer, oodinamathrathil, silaveerakal, viddundhuvittarkal.
Some of the soldiers vomited.
Silaveerakal, vandhyeduttarkal.
You know what the soldiers who were above them did?
Avrakalki, mainaiyurukkara, andharanvveerakal, ennati, chidarkal, terima?
Took them up, lifted them up, gave them water to drink and said, "Keep running, you can't fall down now."
Avrakal, onnediyaa, thukki, kanneekooduthu, oodu, thund, avrakalodu, gudani, oodathaan, vendumendu, oodachidharkal.
You will be given no medication till you reach your destination.
Nee, unidraye, andhammudivayni, adayim, varaikum, onakki, ennamarundukkodukkamudiyadu, chali vittarkal.
Keep running.
Thodandhu, ooduvaaya.
So for literal army people, this, this training is so rigorous.
Indha eduthukuriyaraanuvaveerakalke, ippeeripayich, kadinaamaa, irukkumeyaa, akill.
How much more for spiritual battles we have to be trained?
Appudiendal, avikriyuthangalukku, naam, innum, yavvalukka, adigamai, payich, vikkeppadavindu.
I was once listening to a soldier who was being trained, who was trained in the army.
Orumurai, ranuvathile, payichidhuthaana, uruvuvieenudraye, sondakkadi, naan, kettain.
He said, "Early morning, four o'clock, they all had to go for exercises."
Avarchannal, adihaali, naangumani, kerdundhu, naangalingadu, udarpayich, kaka, selavindu.
And six o'clock, after the, as soon as the exercises are over, two hours, they were exercises, after that, six to nine, they have class, theory class.
Naangilirundhu, aarumanivaray, ingadu, vairapayich, moodindhuvittu, naangal, aarumanikku, ingadu, paadangalukku, vandhu, seeravindu.
Till nine o'clock, they had class.
Adi, onbadumani, varay, ingalukku, paadangal, naddakum.
Then I asked him, "Four o'clock, you get up for exercises and then till nine o'clock continues work, when will you brush your teeth and have your bath?"
Appudidavaduthinidhan, kettain, kaali, naangumani, kum, uddipadipich, aarabikkirathu, onbadumani, kidaan, uddipadangal, mudivu, aravirathu, appudiendal, eppurudinigal, phal, velakkuvirul, endukkettain.
When will you have your bath?
Eppudinigal, kulipirul.
He said, "All that we have to finish before four o'clock."
Appudidav, channabadilinavindam, indha karingal, yavathiyam, naangal, naangumani, kum, munbadhagave, seethivada vendu.
I said, "I asked him, 'After two hours of exercises, you sit in a class, won't you fall sleepy?'"
Naanavadathil, kettukkelvi, ennavindam, irundhumani, neram, udarpayich, seethivittu, udanadi, aay, puy, vaguppil, uddharumbadhu, ungalakku, thookam, varada, endukkettain.
He said, "Yes, we will feel sleepy, but if one person sleeps in the class, the whole class will be punished."
Avarchannal, aam, thukkam, barupadu, polirukkum, anaal, uruviveeran, andha vaguppili, thungibaduvaanayaa, akill, muru, vaguppum, payich, kullaakavindu.
All will have to go five rounds jogging, two kilometers punishment, because someone slept.
Andha vaguppili, uruviveeran, thunginabadinaal, muru, vaguppiviirakalum, seerundhu, aindu kilometer dhuram, avrakal, oodi, oodi, varavindu.
Why?
Een?
They are going to defend the country.
Eenindhal, avrakal, desaththi, padugakkav, seevirakalaa, irukkara.
They can't be lazy people.
Avrakal, urusomberiya, irukkamudiyadu.
They have to be very strict in their disciplines.
Avrakal, thakaduyavurungamurayil, migakandipanavralaa, irukkavindu.
If people, soldiers who are going to face soldiers, human soldiers, have to be so strict in and disciplined, we who are going to face powers of darkness, how disciplined we should be?
Indha ulagathin, indharanuvam, manushavurugale, yavvalukkadinaamaai, thundi, udukkathil, kattukulai, varuvargalay, akill.
Mattammanushargalaisandike.
Mattavashalaisandike, yavvalukkattukul, oruvargalay, akill. Avikriyuthangalaisaygirathana, naam, iralin, vallemagalaisandike, pogumindhi, thana, naam, yavvaluk, odundum, kattukulai, varavindhi, avasiamai, irukkrathu.
That's why we all need to get our minds ready, not to run away, not to get scared, not to withdraw, but to face the enemy and fight against him.
Aaginale, annabriyammanathai, naam, ayyatham sayyavindu, edhakaka, yuttathai, kandu, bayandhu, oodi, thirimbivida, alla, maraha, yuttathai, sandikumbadiyaa.
One reason why God is permitting these trials at a personal level is so that God might take away this fear of suffering.
Namakkulle, devanipripattadana, thanipattasodhiniyala, enanubidikkira, endhal, indha paadukalai, kandu, nam, bayandhavida, kodavinr, andha payathai, nammilundhu, edukumbadiyaa.
Some of us, by now, we should be telling, "I faced enough sufferings, so now if next time my suffering comes, I'm not scared to face it."
Sinamal, esulachaluvargal, solavindu, anegu, paadukalai, naan, sandhitirukkare, aaginale, innoru paad, enakkinnumbaramayaa, akill, adikkandu, nan, bayappadapovathilai.
That's called having the mind to suffer.
Adu daan, paad anubikre, sindai, udavralaa, irukkazendu, artham.
On the other hand, most of us are saying, "I've been suffering all my life so much, when is all this going to end?"
Mattapakkathil, parkapponaa, nan, yavvaluvunaa, laay, paadukalai, anubithukundu, ey, irukkare, eppurudindha, paadukalai, laam, mudivukvarum.
So that's not the question we should ask.
Appudipattakkelvi, naan, kettakoodaadu.
We should be ready to face our battles.
Namdriyathuthathai, naam, sandikke, naam, ayyathamulavralaa, irukkavindu.
One more thing before we move on.
Innoru kariyathin, naan, chalappadukkare.
In every trial, a personal battle that we face.
Naam, sandikrathana, uru thanipattasodhanigalidum.
There are three parts.
Adilai, moondru pagadigalundu.
Or three sides to it.
Adarku, moondru pakkangalundu.
One is the front side of a trial.
Adu, sodhanayin, modan, modan.
First of all.
Modal pagadi, munpakam.
Secondly, is the inside of a trial.
Irundavathupagadi, sodhanayin, udpakam.
The third is the backside of a trial.
Moondavathupagadi, sodhanayin, pinpakam.
Most of us, when we face trials, we only look at the front side.
Anegu, naam, sodhanigalik, sandikumbodhu, andha sodhanayin, munpakathaidan, parkiro.
The sickness.
Vyadigal.
Or that person who's troubling you.
Unney, thondarusigrathana, andhanabar.
Or that demon that's working against your life.
Undray vaki, kuvirudamai, kriisigra, andha pisas.
Or that job that you have not got.
Neem, ven, virkakadakkaprala, andha, unna, veely.
Or that money that is yet to arrive.
Unakkinnumbandhu, seeravindhi, thana, andha panam.
Or that plot of land that someone else has cheated you off.
Neevaythirundai, andhanelathai, veeeruvurun, unna, ey, maathikundu, bonaani, andhanelam.
All this is the front side of a trial.
Ivrgal, yavum, sodhanigalin, munpakadiya, munpakamai, irukkrathu.
But that's not the actual part of the battlefield.
Adu alla, yuttakalathin, nijamana, yuttakalam.
The second part, many of us are trying to solve the battle in the front side, that's all.
Anegur, andha yutt, namakkuvirugrathana, andha sodhanigalin, andha munpakadi, sarisaidivada, mayarchikiro.
But if you solve the problem only on the front side, the problem is not solved.
Andha munpakathai, maathram, ningal, sarisaidivittal, prachinai, mudivukkavandadaai, artamalla.
Because there is another part of the problem, the major part of the problem that is still not settled.
Eenindhal, innum, andha prachinai, urupirumbagadi aanathu, innum, seethsayyappadavillai.
So, if there are some medicines available like this.
Adarkaka, ippeerisalam, marundugalundu.
There is, there was, many years, some years ago, there was a disease called dengue.
Kuncha, aandukalukkumunbaaha, dengyengradana, uruvyadi, vandathundu.
Where every bone used to, the joints used to ache.
Ella, moothugalum, moothuvali, undahum.
Do you know there's no healing for that, there's no medicine for that?
Adark, endevadamaan, marundum, illai, enugalukkitherima?
But hundreds have been admitted into hospitals.
Anaal, nootukkana, kano, indha vyadi, nimittamaha, aasputriyilai, anumadikkappattarkal.
And what treatment do they give?
Avrakal, kikadakkappattan, andha maruthvam, enna?
It's called symptomatic treatment, that means based on the symptoms, they give treatment.
Avrakal, kodukkappattan, andha maruthvam, ennavindam, enna, avrakal, ariguri, arigurigalai, chalukrakaloo, andha, arigurig, eetrevanamaha, marundugalai, koduparkal.
When we feel pain in the body.
Namdriyasariyathramakku, vali, varumbodhu.
When there's a knee pain.
Muttuvali, varumbodhu.
That knee sends a message to the brain.
Udonnediyaa, andha moothanathu, moolekku, urusaidiyai, anupugrathu.
And that, that brain tells the whole body, the knee is aching.
Andha mooleyanathu, muru, sarirathukupurudhu, saidi, anupugrathu.
That's how.
Indha moothu, valikkrathendu, chali.
That's how the whole body feels the pain.
Appudithaan, muru, sariramum, the vali, unaragathu.
But when they give a medicine.
Appudidav, avrakal, urumarundai, kodukkumbodhu.
In symptomatic treatment.
Indha, ariguriin, mulamaha, kodukkappadukrathu, maruthvathin, badi.
That medicine will stop the message from going from the knee to the brain.
Indha marundanathu, indha moothilirundhu, moolek, anupugrathu, andha saidi, adai, niruthividugrathu.
So the brain will not send the message to the whole body.
Eppurudhu, indha mooleyanathu, muru, sarirathukum, indha saidi, anupadu.
So the knee won't pain.
Eppurudhu, moothum, valikkaadu.
But the problem is still there.
Anaal, prachinayio, innum, angay, thanirukkrathu.
The medicine did not heal the knee pain, it only stopped the message from going to the brain and telling the whole body, "The knee is aching."
The marundanathu, andha moothai, sarisayyavillai, maraha, indha marundanathu, moolek, anupugrathu, andha saidi, niruthivittathu.
So the whole body won't realize that something is wrong with the pain, the problem is there, but the pain won't be there.
Aaginale, thana, muru, sariramipurudhu, vali, unarugrathulai, anaal, prachinayio, andha moothil, innundhan, irukkrathu.
In the same way.
Andha evanamaha.
If you try to solve a problem only on the front side.
If you try to solve a problem only on the front side.
It's like this.
It's like this.
There's another big part of the problem that is yet unsolved.
There's another big part of the problem that is yet unsolved.
That's the inside of a problem.
That's the inside of a problem.
Read James chapter four, verse one.
Read James chapter four, verse one.
If you have saved many people, you will come from many places.
From whence come wars and fighting among you, come they not hence, even of your last, that war in your members?
From whence come wars and fighting among you.
In English, it says, "from your heart." But in Tamil, it says, "from your heart."
Is it not because of lust that war inside your soul?
Is it not because of lust that war inside your soul?
So what does the meaning of this verse?
What does the meaning of this verse?
Wars take place outside because of an actual war going on inside.
When the war goes on. When the war goes on.
So the actual inside of the problem is our own heart.
When the problem is our own heart. When the problem is our own heart.
So in a, in a trial or in a battlefield, the actual problem is our heart or our mind or our inward man.
So in a, in a trial or in a battlefield, the actual problem is our heart or our mind or our inward man.
So in a, in a trial or in a battlefield, the actual problem is our heart or our mind or our inward man.
So in a, in a trial or in a battlefield, the actual problem is our heart or our mind or our inward man.
So when a war takes place amongst us or fighting takes place amongst us.
When a war takes place amongst us.
We have to settle it inside us.
We have to settle it inside us.
But we are all ready to accuse the other person, he is irritating me, I have got blood pressure and he is always speaking against me. I've got diabetes, I'm weak, I'm old, he doesn't realize my, my situation. We are always blaming the others and sympathizing with ourselves.
But we are always blaming the others and sympathizing with ourselves. But we are always blaming the others and sympathizing with ourselves.
They are not understanding me properly.
They are not understanding me properly.
They say all these things to cover ourselves and we try to solve the other person.
They say all these things to cover ourselves and we try to solve the other person.
But that's a failure in Christian battle.
But that's a failure in Christian battle.
True victory in Christian battle is to solve the battle or settle the battle inside ourselves.
True Christian battle or true victory in Christian battle is to discover the lust within ourselves and settle that lust or take victory over that lust. When we discover the lust within ourselves and settle that lust or take victory over that lust. When we discover the lust within ourselves and settle that lust or take victory over that lust.
We are very good at finding the moats in other people's eye, but we don't discover the beams in our eyes.
When we discover the beams in our eyes. When we discover the beams in our eyes.
Read that in Matthew chapter seven.
Read that in Matthew chapter seven.
When you see the sun in your eyes, you will see the sun in your eyes.
And why beholds thou both that is in thy brother's eye, but considers not the beam that is in thine own eye?
Now Jesus was a carpenter in his young days.
When Jesus was a carpenter.
Moats and beams are, moats are like sawdust, when you scrape a wood, you have dust coming out, that is moat. Beam is small splinters of, splinters of wood that get cut off from the main piece of wood.
When the wood is cut off. When the wood is cut off. When the wood is cut off.
So moat is small, beam is big.
When the wood is cut off.
So in a carpenter's language, Jesus is saying, you have only dust in your, you have a big splinter in your eye that has to be removed, but you are trying to remove the dust in someone else's eye.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
In other words, human beings are very good at finding other people's faults, but very bad at finding their own faults.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
But victory in Christian battle is to see what's inside ourselves and settle it there.
When Jesus is saying.
So next time we face a battle, next time someone scolds us, next time someone tells something wrong about us, let's not go to fight fought with others, that's their problem, that they have to settle with God. But if we want victory in this battle, let's look inside and see how much lust is burning against others, how much anger is boiling against others, how much bitterness is there against other people and try to solve that and get right with God.
When Jesus is saying. 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 When Jesus is saying.
That's when we win our Christian battle.
When Jesus is saying.
So the first side of the battle is the front side.
When Jesus is saying.
The second side is the inside.
When Jesus is saying.
The third side is the back side of a problem or a trial or a battle.
When Jesus is saying.
What is that?
What is that?
We don't realize that in every problem that we face, there is a group of invisible beings watching us.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
God, angels, Satan, fallen angels, they are all watching us.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
Turn to second Kings chapter six.
Turn to second Kings chapter six.
And read verses fifteen to seventeen.
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
Read verse seventeen in the Lord's English.
And Elisha prayed and said, Lord, I pray thee, openest eyes that he may see. And the Lord opened the eyes of the young man, and he saw, and beholds, the mountain was full of horses and chariots of fire round about Elisha.
Now Elisha and his servant are in a battle.
When Elisha and his servant are in a battle.
Now the servant saw the front side of the trial.
When Elisha and his servant saw the front side of the trial.
Army of chariots and horses had surrounded the village.
When the army of chariots and horses had surrounded the village.
So he got so scared and worked up and worried, master, master, they have surrounded us.
When he got so scared and worked up and worried, master, master, they have surrounded us.
What shall we do?
What shall we do?
But there was a backside to that battle that he did not notice.
When he did not notice.
Elisha saw that backside.
When Elisha saw that backside.
That's why he said, don't be afraid, those who are on our side are more than these horses and chariots.
When he said, don't be afraid, those who are on our side are more than these horses and chariots.
Elisha didn't say, Lord, open my eyes that I may see, he saw it himself, but he said, open the servant's eyes that he may see.
When he said, open the servant's eyes that he may see. When he said, open the servant's eyes that he may see.
When he said, open the servant's eyes that he may see.
When he said, open the servant's eyes that he may see.
Angels and demons are watching our words, our reactions, our emotions.
When angels and demons are watching our words, our reactions, our emotions. When angels and demons are watching our words, our reactions, our emotions.
In other words, every time we think we are facing a battle alone, we are not alone, there is a big public that is invisible, that's always watching us.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
When Job faced a trial.
When Job faced a trial.
It was a bet, it was a challenge between God and Satan.
When Jesus is saying.
God said, Job is an upright man.
When Jesus is saying.
But Satan said, yeah, he'll be upright, you put a fence around him, a fence around his house, a fence around everything he has, any man will be upright, you take away that fence and see what he does.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
Then God said, alright, take away the fence.
Then God said, alright, take away the fence.
So that was a challenge between God and Satan.
When Jesus is saying.
Suddenly calamity strikes Job's house.
When Jesus is saying.
At that time.
At that time.
We must realize, we all read Job chapter one, but Job wouldn't have read Job chapter one.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
Because he doesn't know that a challenge is going on.
When Jesus is saying.
And God according to the rules is not allowed to go and whisper to Job saying, Job, Job, a trial is going to come, Satan is going to demolish your house, so don't deny me.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
So, there is a backside to Job's problem that Job did not notice.
When Jesus is saying.
But yet Job in his trial spoke his words so correctly that heaven and God rejoiced.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
If we murmur in our trials and ask questions to God.
When Jesus is saying.
It means we are fighting our battles very badly.
When Jesus is saying.
Who are we to question God?
When Jesus is saying.
Some people get angry with God.
When Jesus is saying.
I am angry with God.
When Jesus is saying.
He is partial.
When Jesus is saying.
To that person, he is dealing like this, to me, he is dealing like this.
When Jesus is saying.
I keep asking him, he is not giving me an answer.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
So because of unanswered questions or confusions in the mind, we get angry with God.
When Jesus is saying.
Just imagine how funny that is.
When Jesus is saying.
We getting angry with God, who is God, who are we?
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. Heaven is his throne, the earth is his footstool.
When Jesus is saying.
If he places, if he places his foot on this earth, his, his one toe can cover entire India.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
So big is God.
When Jesus is saying.
And here I sit in one corner of India and say, I am angry with God, I am not going to talk to him.
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. The all understanding, all wise God.
When Jesus is saying.
We are the ones who don't know so much.
When Jesus is saying.
He knows everything.
When Jesus is saying.
But we ask him questions.
When Jesus is saying.
So, it's our lack of understanding.
When Jesus is saying.
That's why at the end of the trial.
When Jesus is saying.
God did not pat Job on the back saying, don't worry, Job, we are all right in the sweet by and by.
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. His cold Job.
When Jesus is saying.
He asked Job more than sixty questions.
When Jesus is saying.
Job, were you there when the foundations of the earth was laid?
When Jesus is saying.
Are you able to make, bring snow down from the skies?
When Jesus is saying.
Did you make Leviathan?
When Jesus is saying.
Have you made the battle horse?
When Jesus is saying.
So God asked question after question and Job said, Lord, I spoke without understanding, now I put my hand to my lips.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
I thought I knew, but now I know I don't know.
When Jesus is saying.
In our battles, if we think we know everything and we are going to question God for everything, we are failing in our battles.
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. So we must learn to fight and face our battles correctly.
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. Because only then we will be ready and prepared to face the next battle.
When Jesus is saying.
Now we will move to level two of the battle of spiritual warfare.
When Jesus is saying.
This is something that most of us would not have heard.
When Jesus is saying.
There is a second level battle or warfare that is going to take place very soon in this world.
When Jesus is saying.
It's a war that is going to take place on an international scale.
When Jesus is saying.
It's a war between those who love the truth and live according to the truth and those who hate the truth.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
It's going to be a literal spiritual battle.
When Jesus is saying.
In other words, our adversaries are going to rise up against us literally.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
But we have to work against them spiritually.
When Jesus is saying.
So we have to learn how to fight this battle.
When Jesus is saying.
The first level battle is as, is at a personal level, but the second level battle is what we have to wage together at a collective level.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
Christian brother, Christian sister, listen to me carefully.
When Jesus is saying.
Before Jesus comes, before the second coming of Christ.
When Jesus is saying.
There is a battle that Christians are going to face.
When Jesus is saying.
There is going to be a collective battle between forces of darkness and the church of God.
When Jesus is saying.
When Jesus is saying. Satan is going to raise up people against the church of God.
When Jesus is saying.
Satan himself with his forces of darkness and evil angels is going to rise up against the church of God.
When Jesus is saying.
Collectively, we have to get ready to face that battle.
When Jesus is saying.
If we have to win that battle.
When Jesus is saying.
We have to get trained now itself.
When Jesus is saying.
If we don't fight our battles well today at level one, at the personal level, at level two, when we start fighting, we will start fighting the wrong way and create trouble for others and for the church of God.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
Now we are going to see from the word of God, some verses of the Bible to prove that such a battle is prophesied in the Bible.
When Jesus is saying.
Such a battle is going to take place between the church of God and the forces of darkness like it has never happened before.
When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying. When Jesus is saying.
From the day the church was formed till today, such a battle has not taken place.
When Jesus is saying.
But before Jesus comes, the church will have to face such a battle.
When Jesus is saying.
It is to announce to you this message, I said, this is not just a Bible study, there is a message in these Bible studies and that it is to announce to you this message that this Bible study is held.
When Jesus is saying.
That, that, and it is just to say, to tell you this message that this Bible studies has been conducted.
When Jesus is saying.
Now I am going to show you some. Now I'm going to show you some verses from the Bible to prove to you that such a battle is going to take place.
இப்படிப்பட்டதான யுத்தம் நடக்கத்தான் போகிறதென்பதை உங்களுக்கு நிருவிக்குப்படியாக, வேதத்திலிருந்து சில வேதவாக்கிகளை உங்களுக்கு சுட்டி காட்டவிரும்புகிறேன்.
Read Jeremiah chapter twelve and verse five.
எரெமையா, பனிரெண்டாமதிஹாரம், ஐந்தாமவசனம்.
நீ காலங்களோடு ஓடும்போதே உன்னை இளைக்கப்பண்ணினார்களானால், குதிரிகளோடு எப்படி சேர்ந்து ஓடுவாய்? சமாதானமுள்ள தேசத்திலே நீ அடிக்கலந்தேடினால், யோர்தான் பிரவாகித்து வரும்போது நீ என்ன செய்வாய்?
If thou hast rung with the footmen and they have weary thee, how then hast thou contented horses? And if in the land of peace wherein thou trustedst, they weary thee, then how wilt thou do in the swelling of Jordan?
Here we see a two-fold battle, sorry, two-level battle.
இங்கே இரண்டு விதமான, இரண்டு படிகள் நிரிந்ததான யுத்தத்தைப் பார்க்குறோம்.
Level one and level two.
முதல்படி, இரண்டாவது படி.
One is the footmen, the second level is the horsemen.
முதலாவது படி, காலாட்கள், இரண்டாவது படி, குதிரைகளோடே.
First level is the land of peace, the second level is the swelling of Jordan.
முதல் படிதான் சமாதானமுள்ள தேசம், இரண்டாவது படி, யோர்தான் பிரவாகித்து வரும்பொழுது.
So at the first level, at the footmen level, you are weary and tired and you are speaking words of murmuring and fed up, then when you go and fight at the second level, what are you going to do? Is what the question, the verse asks.
இந்த வசனம் கேட்கிற கேள்வியென்ன, அந்த முதல்படியாகிய காலாட்களோடு நீ ஓடும்பொழுதே, நீ இளைக்கப்பண்ணினால், இரண்டாவது படியாகிய குதிரிகளோடே நீ எப்படி ஓடுவாய்?
These days which you are facing your battles is called the land of peace. In this land of peace, if you are going to get tired and say, and murmur and get fed up, how are you going to fight at the swelling of Jordan?
இந்த நாட்கிழிலே, நீ சந்திக்கிறதான சோதனிகள் யாவுமே, சமாதானமுள்ள தேசத்தில் சந்திக்கிறதான சிறிய சோதனிகள், இதைக் கண்டேன் நீ பயந்து வேற்றுபோய் சோந்துபோவாய்? ஆனால் அல்லது முறுமுறுப்பாயானால், எப்படினி யோர்தான் பிரவாகித்து வருகிறதான அந்த இரண்டாவது படிலைத்தத்தைச் செய்வாய்?
Jordan is the river that was standing between Canaan and the children of Israel as they went on their journey.
இச்ரவேலுக்குத் தன்னடிப் பிரயாணத்தில் போய்க்கொண்டிருந்துபொழுது, இச்ரவேலுக்கும் கானானுக்கும் மத்தில் நின்றதான அந்த ஆருதான் யோர்தான்.
So just before entering Canaan is Jordan.
நீங்கள் கானானுக்கு பிரவீசிக்கும் முன்பதாக, சத்து முன்பதாகவே, இந்த யோர்தான் காணப்படுகிறது.
Jordan is a type of a battle or a big trials that the church of God has to face before entering the kingdom of God.
தேவுடைய ராஜ்யத்திற்குள்ளாய், சபையானது பிரவீசிக்கும் சத்து முன்பாகத்தானே, இந்த யோர்தான் எங்கிரதான அந்த சோதனை சந்திக்கவேண்டும்.
So this verse says that before we enter into New Jerusalem and Zion, before we are caught up at the coming of the Lord, before the church of God enters into heavenly Canaan, there is a Jordan that we have to face.
ஆகினால் இந்த வசனம் செல்லுகிறது, சபையானது, புதிய இருசிலேயும் சியோனும் சென்ற அடையும் முன்பாக, சபையானது தேவுடைய ராஜ்யத்தை சென்ற அடையும் முன்பாக, அதற்கு முன்பாய், யோர்தான் எங்கிரதான அந்த சோதனைக்குள்ளாய் போகத்தான் வேண்டும்.
So there is a period of trial for the church of God before the coming of the Lord.
தேவுடைய வருகிக்கு முன்பாக, தேவுடைய சபைக்கு ஒரு சோதனின் காலம் உண்டு.
Another verse.
மற்ற வசனம்.
Read Psalm one hundred and ten and verse three.
சங்கிதம் நூற்றிபத்தாமதிஹாரம், மூன்றாம் வசனம்.
உம்மது பராக்ரமத்தின், உம்மது பராக்ரமத்தின் நாளிலே, உம்மடியே ஜனங்கள் மனப்பூர்வமும், அரசுத் தனங்கர, அநங்காரமும் உள்ளவர்களாய் இப்பார்கள். பிரியர் காலத்துக்கு அர்ப்பத்தைப் பிறக்கு பணிக்கே சமானமாய், உம்மடியே யவன ஜனம் உம்மக்குப் பிறக்கும்.
Thy people shall be willing in the day of thy power, in the beauties of holiness, from the womb of the morning, thou hast the due of thy youth.
Here in this verse we read, a young people is going to be born to thee.
இங்கே நாம் வாசிக்கிறோம், உம்மக்கு ஒரு யவன ஜனம். உம்மக்கு ஒரு யவன ஜனம் பிறக்கும்.
So that shows the coming of the Lord.
அதுதான் கற்றடிய வருகை குறுது செல்லப்படுகிறது.
But before that, there is a day or a period called the day of God's power.
அதற்கு முன்பாக, ஒரு காலம் அல்லது ஒரு நாள் எண்டு உண்டு, அதுதான் பராக்ரமத்தின் நாள்.
அவருடைய பராக்ரமத்தின் நாள். So it's the day or a period before a young people is born to God or before the man child is formed or before the church of God is caught up at the coming of the Lord, there is a day or a period for the church where God's power is going to be manifest through the church.
ஒரு யவன ஜனம் பிறக்கும் முன்பாக, ஆன்புள்ளை பிறக்கும் முன்பாக, தேவுடைய சபையானது தேவுடைய ராஜ்யத்தில் சேரும் முன்பாக, ஒரு காலம் உண்டு, அந்த காலந்தான் தேவுடைய பராக்ரமத்தின் காலம், அந்த காலத்தில் தேவுடைய பராக்ரமம் சபையிலே பிரஸ்தாபம் பண்ணப்படும்.
So God is going to show his power on the enemies of the church.
தேவன் தன்னடியை வல்லமை, சபையின் சத்துருகளின் மத்திலே வெளிப்படுத்தபோகிறார்.
This verse says on that day, when God is going to reveal his power upon the enemies of God, the people in the church of God are going to be willing.
இந்த வசனம் செல்லுகிறது, அந்த பராக்ரமத்தின் நாளிலே, அல்லது தேவன் தன்னடியை வல்லமை, சத்துருகளின் மத்திலே அனுப்பாந்த நாளில் தானே, உம்மடியே ஜனங்கள் மனப்பூர்வமாயிருப்பார்கள்.
In other words, they are now ready to face battles today. We are afraid of battles today, we are afraid of trials, we want to withdraw, we want to come out immediately, but when we arm ourselves with that mind to suffer, then we will be willing to face the battle.
மற்றவாத்தைகளிச் செல்லப்பொனால், இந்நாட்கிழிலே, யுத்தத்தைக்கண்டு சோதனைக்கண்டு நாம் பயந்து ஓடம்பயர்ச்சிக்கிறோம். ஆனால் தேவுடைய பராக்ரமத்தை நாலே, தேவுடைய சர்வாய்தவர்க்கத்தினாலே, தேவுடைய ஜனங்கள் சபை தரிபிக்கப்படும்பொழுது.
When we arm our minds to suffer.
நம்மடியே மனதை பாடன்பிக்குப்படி ஆயதமாய் நாம் சிந்தை தரித்துக்கொள்ளும்பொழுது, மனப்பூர்வமாய் பாடன்பிவிக்க சபை ஆயத்தமாகும்.
So here is a people who are willing to fight and willing to demonstrate the power of God against the enemy.
இங்கே தேவுடைய ஜனங்கள், தேவுடைய சத்துருகளின் மத்திலே, தேவுடைய பராக்ரமத்தை செலுத்தும்படி மனப்பூர்வமாயிருக்கிறார்கள்.
We'll show you another verse.
இன்னும் வசனத்தைச் செல்லுகிறோம்.
Ezekiel chapter thirty-seven.
ஐசைக்கில் நின்று புத்தகம் மூப்பத்திராமதிஹாரம்.
We read of the valley of dry bones.
அங்கே நாம் உளர்ந்த எலும்புகளின் பள்ளத்தாக்கி குறுது வாசிக்கிறோம்.
There God asks Ezekiel to prophesy.
அங்கே தேவன் ஐசைக்கிலைப் பார்த்து திர்க்கதரசினம் செல்லச்சன்னார்.
And he prophesies.
அவன் அங்கே போய் திர்க்கதரசினம் சென்னான்.
And suddenly a miracle takes place, all these dry bones come to life and they become, see what happens to them.
அங்கே உடனடியாகுவர் புதம் நடந்தது, அங்கு உளர்ந்த எலும்புகள் யாவும் இப்படுது வீரடைந்தன.
Read Ezekiel chapter thirty-seven and verse ten.
ஐசைக்கில் மூப்பத்திராமதிஹாரம், பத்தாம் வசனம்.
எனக்கு கற்பிக்கப்பட்டுபடி, நான் திர்க்கதரசினம் உரைத்தேன், அப்பொழுது ஆவி அவர்களுக்கு பிரவீசிக்க, அவர்கள் வீரடைந்து காலுந்தி, மகாபிரிய சேனையாய் நின்றார்கள்.
So I prophesied as he commanded me, and the breath came into him, and they lived and stood up upon their feet and exceeding great army.
So Ezekiel prophesies and breath came into them, they lived, they stood up on their feet and all of them went home and lived happily ever after. Is that what the verse says?
ஐசைக்கிலுக்கு திர்க்கதரசினம் வரைத்தான், உடனடியாக ஆவி அவர்களுக்கு பிரவீசிக்க, அவர்கள் வீரடைந்து காலுந்தின்று, அவர்கள் எல்லாரும் சந்தோஷமாய் விட்டுக்கு போனார்களென்றா, வசனம் செல்லுகிறது.
What happened to them?
அவர்கள் என்ன நடந்தது?
They became an army.
அவர்கள் பெரிய சேனையாய் மாறினார்கள்.
Why? They were not just a group of people, they became an army.
அவர்கள் ஏதோ வீரடைந்து, ஒரு குட்டு ஜனமாயிருக்கவில்லை, பெரிய சேனையாய் நின்றார்கள்.
So what does an army do?
சேனை என்ன செய்கிறது?
An army fights.
சேனை, யுத்தம் செய்கிறது.
So this is a prophecy about a revival in the last days.
இதுதான் கடேசி நாட்கள் நடக்கப்போகிறதான எடுப்புதலைக் குறித்ததான திர்க்கதரசினமாயிருக்கிறது.
Normally, when we speak of the word revival, Christians think, you know, demons will flee and sicknesses will be healed, many will come to church, that's all only part of it, but here is an army getting ready to fight a battle.
Enemies killed them, now they are now coming back to life and going to fight against the enemy once again.
And we understand that in a lifetime, they were all dead. When they fought, they were killed. Now, they are saying their words are dead.
So this verse also, this scripture portion also shows that in the last days, the church of God is going to fight a battle.
In this epic story, we have heard that in a country, there is a heroic battle.
Another verse, another one, Malachi chapter four, Malchiah nine. Read verse one.
One verse.
Enough.
For behold, the day cometh, and shall burn as an oven, and all the proud, yea, and all the do wickedly shall be stubble.
So what's written here?
Here it is written.
A day is coming that's going to burn like an oven.
The sun will shine.
This shows the tribulation period that's going to come upon the earth very soon.
It is coming soon. The time of the revolution is coming.
Or it shows the rule of the Antichrist.
Or the Antichrist's people are saying this.
But before that.
Before that.
Just before the Antichrist comes to power, just before the, a day comes which shall burn as an oven.
The sun will shine. The day will come. The day of the Antichrist's people will come.
Read the second verse, what happens?
Read the second verse.
But unto you that fear my name, shall the son of righteousness arise with healing in his wings, and he shall go forth and grow up as calves of the straw.
So before the Antichrist comes to power, Jesus is going to rise up in his church.
The Antichrist's people will come. Jesus will come to his church.
And when he rises up in the church, what is going to happen?
When he rises up in the church. What is going to happen?
Read the next verse.
And he shall tread down the wicked, for they shall be ashes under the soles of your feet, in the day that I shall do this, said the Lord of hosts.
So here is something that God is going to do, or Jesus is going to do, when he rises up in the church as the son of righteousness before the Antichrist's rule.
When the Antichrist's people will come.
This is what he is going to do.
This is what he is going to do.
Ye shall tread down the wicked under your feet, and they shall be ashes under your feet, in the day that the Lord of hosts shall do this.
The Antichrist's people will come.
So this verse shows there's going to be a battle between the church of God and a group of people called the wicked ones. And the church of God is going to tread upon the wicked ones and trample them on their feet and make them ashes.
This is what the Lord is saying. One side of the Antichrist, the other side of the Lord's church. The Antichrist will come to the Lord's church.
Another verse, Isaiah chapter sixty.
Isaiah sixty one.
Read the first two verses.
Read the first two verses.
Sorry, sixty one, Isaiah chapter sixty one, first two verses.
Isaiah sixty one. One verse.
The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me, because the Lord hath anointed me to preach good tidings unto the meek; he hath sent me to bind up the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and the opening of the prison to them that are bound, to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord, and the day of vengeance of our God, to comfort all that mourn.
Here we read of a prophecy about Jesus Christ.
Here we read of a prophecy.
So Jesus says, the Spirit of the Lord is upon me for certain reasons.
Jesus says, the Spirit of the Lord is upon me for certain reasons.
And one of them is mentioned in verse two.
This is what Jesus says.
The Spirit of the Lord is upon me to proclaim the day of vengeance of our God.
The Lord is upon me to proclaim the day of vengeance of our God. The Lord is upon me to proclaim the day of vengeance of our God.
In English, it is the day of vengeance of God.
The Lord is upon me to proclaim the day of vengeance of our God.
So there is, Jesus is making an announcement of a day of vengeance at a later point of time.
The day of vengeance of our God.
So Jesus says, the church of God is going to take vengeance upon someone at a later point of time. Jesus makes only the announcement for that.
The day of vengeance of our God. The day of vengeance of our God. Read the second verse.
Also read in Isaiah thirty four eight.
Isaiah thirty four eight.
For it is the day of the Lord's vengeance and the year of recompenses for the controversy of Zion.
So here again, we read of the day of vengeance.
Here we read of the day of vengeance.
Again, also we read of the year of recompense.
We read of the year of recompense.
So what is the meaning of that?
Understand.
Here we read of what is called the controversy or the case of Zion.
Here we read of the controversy or the case of Zion.
There is a case going on about Zion.
There is a case going on about Zion.
Uh, when that case is over.
When that case is over.
This day of vengeance or year of recompense will be declared by God.
The day of vengeance of our God.
So that's the beginning of that battle before the coming of the Lord.
The day of vengeance of our God.
I will just show you one more verse.
Read the second verse.
Revelation chapter thirteen.
Read the second verse.
Read verse three.
Read the second verse.
And I saw one of his heads, as it were wounded to death.
Here we see, the head of the Antichrist has a deadly wound on it.
The head of the Antichrist has a deadly wound on it.
How did that wound come upon it?
How did that wound come upon it?
Read verse fourteen.
Read the second verse.
So here we read, this beast was wounded because it was hit by a sword.
Here we read of the sword.
How is it that the Antichrist is wounded by a sword?
How is it that the Antichrist is wounded by a sword?
By an enemy.
By an enemy.
Who could be that enemy?
Who could be that enemy?
The Antichrist is going to rule the whole world.
The Antichrist is going to rule the whole world.
He has only one enemy, the church of God.
He has only one enemy, the church of God.
So this verse also indirectly says that before the man-child is caught up to the throne of God, before the church is ruptured, the church is going to lay a wound on the head of the Antichrist and then go away.
The Antichrist is going to lay a wound on the head of the Antichrist and then go away.
Now why did I give you so many verses?
Why did I give you so many verses?
Only to prove to you and announce to you that there's a war coming for the church of God where we all have to fight together.
We have to fight together. We have to fight together. We have to fight together. I told you, it's a literal spiritual war. I told you, it's a literal spiritual war.
They will come against us literally.
They will come against us literally.
The enemies of the truth and the enemies of the church of God will come against the church of God literally.
The enemies of the truth and the enemies of the church of God will come against the church of God literally.
But we can't go against them literally.
But we can't go against them literally.
The weapons of our warfare are not carnal.
The weapons of our warfare are not carnal.
We do not wrestle against flesh and blood.
We do not wrestle against flesh and blood.
So we have to fight against them, uh, face them spiritually.
So we have to fight against them, uh, face them spiritually.
Otherwise, we'll start killing people.
Otherwise, we'll start killing people.
If we fight spiritually, we can save some of them and condemn the demons behind them.
If we fight spiritually, we can save some of them and condemn the demons behind them.
There's one more verse.
Read Ephesians chapter six. Ephesians six.
And read verse thirteen.
Ephesians sixteen.
Way forth take unto you the whole armor of God, that he may be able to withstand the evil day, and having done all to stand.
So why is God asking the reader to take the whole armor of God?
Why is God asking the reader to take the whole armor of God?
Here, an announcement is made, a day is coming called the evil day.
Here we read of the evil day.
So in that evil day, that the church of God might stand, oh soul Christ, take upon unto you the whole armor of God.
So in that evil day, that the church of God might stand, oh soul Christ, take upon unto you the whole armor of God.
So let's be ready to face that evil day when it comes before Jesus comes.
So let's be ready to face that evil day when it comes before Jesus comes.
When you look at the children of Israel.
When you look at the children of Israel.
They were only a small group of people.
They were only a small group of people.
They were shepherds by trade.
They were shepherds by trade.
But when they set out of Egypt.
But when they set out of Egypt.
They started learning war.
They started learning war.
Till then, they did not know how to hold swords or shields.
Till then, they did not know how to hold swords or shields.
When they entered into Canaan.
When they entered into Canaan.
They were surrounded by enemies.
They were surrounded by enemies.
On the chart, you have a map of Israel.
On the chart, you have a map of Israel.
You will see there are so many enemies surrounding them.
You will see there are so many enemies surrounding them.
This is Edom.
This is Edom.
That is Moab.
That is Moab.
Moab. That is Ammon.
Ammon.
In the north, you have Syria.
Syria.
So, uh, and the Philistines are on this side.
The Philistines are on this side.
So they are surrounded by enemies.
So they are surrounded by enemies.
So every now and then the Moabites or the Ammonites or the Philistines or the Syrians all will keep fighting one after the other.
So every now and then the Moabites or the Ammonites or the Philistines or the Syrians all will keep fighting one after the other.
The history of Israel is fraught with battles.
The history of Israel is fraught with battles.
So, but if you see, after all the battles have been fought, history full of battles, what is the result?
After all the battles have been fought, history full of battles, what is the result?
The result is, Israel today has become a big superpower, the whole world is afraid of Israel.
The result is, Israel today has become a big superpower, the whole world is afraid of Israel.
Today, Israel is surrounded by Islamic nations.
Today, Israel is surrounded by Islamic nations.
All are enemies of Israel.
All are enemies of Israel.
Do you know, Israel is only about half the size of Tamil Nadu?
Do you know, Israel is only about half the size of Tamil Nadu?
Such a small country is making the whole world afraid.
Such a small country is making the whole world afraid.
Today, if a world war three breaks out, Israel is going to be the major cause for it.
Today, if a world war three breaks out, Israel is going to be the major cause for it.
Such a small country is making the whole world afraid. Read Zechariah chapter twelve.
Read Zechariah chapter twelve.
And read verses two and three.
Read the second verse.
Zechariah twelve, two and three.
Zechariah twenty two and three.
Behold, I will make Jerusalem a cup of trembling unto all the people round about, when they shall be in the siege, both against Judah and against Jerusalem, and in that day will I make Jerusalem a burdensome stone for all people; all that burden themselves with it shall be cut in pieces, though all the people of the earth be gathered together against it.
In the last part of verse three, in Tamil, it says, all the people of the earth shall be gathered together against it.
In the last part of verse three, in Tamil, it says, all the people of the earth shall be gathered together against it. In the last part of verse three, in Tamil, it says, all the people of the earth shall be gathered together against it. In the last part of verse three, in Tamil, it says, all the people of the earth shall be gathered together against it. In the last part of verse three, in Tamil, it says, all the people of the earth shall be gathered together against it.
So that's how it is written in Tamil.
So that's how it is written in Tamil.
And English. So, I am going to make Jerusalem a cup of trembling for all nations.
So, I am going to make Jerusalem a cup of trembling for all nations.
Today, the whole world is afraid of Israel.
Today, the whole world is afraid of Israel.
Small country, half the size of Tamil Nadu.
Small country, half the size of Tamil Nadu.
But the whole world is afraid of it.
But the whole world is afraid of it.
So just like a group of shepherds have now enlarged and increased and become a superpower scaring the whole world.
So just like a group of shepherds have now enlarged and increased and become a superpower scaring the whole world.
So just like a group of shepherds have now enlarged and increased and become a superpower scaring the whole world. But after a while, they are going to be anointed and strengthened and grow into a superpower that's going to scare the demons of hell and the pop people of this world.
But after a while, they are going to be anointed and strengthened and grow into a superpower that's going to scare the demons of hell and the pop people of this world.
Those who believe, they shout, "Hallelujah!"
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 Today, we are a group of timid people, we are scared about trials.
Today, we are a group of timid people, we are scared about trials.
But I believe that God is going to strengthen us.
But I believe that God is going to strengthen us.
But before that.
But before that.
I would like to say a few things about who our enemy is.
I would like to say a few things about who our enemy is.
Our enemy can be divided into four parts.
Our enemy can be divided into four parts.
One, evil spirits.
One, evil spirits.
Two, I will come to later.
Two, I will come to later.
Three, human beings who are instruments of Satan.
Three, human beings who are instruments of Satan.
People who have sold themselves to Satan and who are serving Satan and who are working against God willingly on behalf of Satan.
People who are working against God willingly on behalf of Satan.
People who are dragging other people towards Satan.
People who are dragging other people towards Satan.
This is group three, the instruments of Satan.
This is group three, the instruments of Satan.
The fourth group.
The fourth group.
Innocent victims, innocent people of this world who are lured or tempted into Satan's trap and thereby belong to Satan's group.
Innocent people of this world who are lured or tempted into Satan's trap
But they are innocent.
But they are innocent.
They don't know they are on the wrong side, but because of sin and temptations and worldliness, they are lured into the trap of the adversary.
They are lured into the trap of the adversary.
Now, I'm going to come to the second group.
Now, I'm going to come to the second group.
Before that.
Before that.
We all know the Bible says, the mystery of iniquity is at work.
The mystery of iniquity is at work.
So before Jesus comes, even in Saint Paul's days, the mystery of iniquity was, was at work, but now that mystery of iniquity is increasing and increasing and is going to reach an abominable height.
The mystery of iniquity is increasing and increasing and is going to reach an abominable height.
The mystery of iniquity is increasing and increasing and is going to reach an abominable height.
The mystery of iniquity is increasing and increasing and is going to reach an abominable height.
The mystery of iniquity works as a great deception.
The mystery of iniquity works as a great deception.
Satan, the father of lies, has managed to deceive every, almost everyone in this world through science.
Satan, the father of lies, has managed to deceive every, almost everyone in this world through science.
Satan, the father of lies, has managed to deceive every, almost everyone in this world through science. Till about a hundred and fifty years ago.
Till about a hundred and fifty years ago.
Everybody in schools and colleges studied science in a different way.
Everybody in schools and colleges studied science in a different way.
But one man came along and presented a science in a new way about how the world could have found.
But one man came along and presented a science in a new way about how the world could have found.
His name was Charles Darwin.
His name was Charles Darwin.
He himself said, "My theory can be wrong."
He himself said, "My theory can be wrong."
Although he himself, who put forward the theory, said he may be wrong, other scientists have put it into the textbooks today as though it is true.
Although he himself, who put forward the theory, said he may be wrong, other scientists have put it into the textbooks today as though it is true.
Even today, there are hundreds of scientists who have finished their PhDs who refuse to believe in this theory proposed by Charles Darwin, but still it has been brought into the textbook as though that is science.
Even today, there are hundreds of scientists who have finished their PhDs who refuse to believe in this theory proposed by Charles Darwin,
but still it has been brought into the textbook as though that is science.
Even today, there are hundreds of scientists who have finished their PhDs
But still it has been brought into the textbook as though that is science. If this world has been made by means other than God, if this world has actually come into existence by accident, if we human beings have just come into this world by accident, it means there need not be God. If there's no God, I can do what I like.
If there's no God, I can do what I like.
Then it means, there need not be a God.
Then it means, there need not be a God.
And if there's no God.
And if there's no God.
I don't have to give accounts to anyone at the end of my life.
I don't have to give accounts to anyone at the end of my life.
That means, I can make my own rules and I can live as I like.
That means, I can make my own rules and I can live as I like.
So once the, this philosophy or in the name of science came into the textbooks and into the minds of people.
So once the, this philosophy or in the name of science came into the textbooks and into the minds of people.
Today, in every school, they are teaching that man came from a monkey.
Today, in every school, they are teaching that man came from a monkey.
Do you know, there are so many questions that cannot be answered?
Do you know, there are so many questions that cannot be answered?
Do you know, they have started off with so many assumptions which have no proper base?
Do you know, they have started off with so many assumptions which have no proper base?
Do you know, they have started off with so many assumptions which have no proper base? Do you know, they have started off with so many assumptions which have no proper base?
Do you know, they have started off with so many assumptions which have no proper base?
You hit the soli.
You hit the soli.
So, but still, it is being taught as though it is a science.
So, but still, it is being taught as though it is a science.
This is a plot of the father of lies.
This is a plot of the father of lies.
So now, he has put God out of the minds of human beings.
So now, he has put God out of the minds of human beings.
Do you know, America is no longer a Christian nation?
Do you know, America is no longer a Christian nation?
Three years ago, that announcement was made by the president, America is no longer a Christian nation.
Three years ago, that announcement was made by the president, America is no longer a Christian nation.
Three years ago, that announcement was made by the president, America is no longer a Christian nation. So what happens?
So what happens?
A great falling away is taking place.
A great falling away is taking place.
Christians who are formerly Christians, nations that were formerly Christian are now becoming un-Christian.
Christians who are formerly Christians, nations that were formerly Christian are now becoming un-Christian.
But there is one question that is remaining.
But there is one question that is remaining.
What is that?
What is that?
When Charles Darwin made his theory.
When Charles Darwin made his theory.
He drew a big picture, which is called the Tree of Life.
He drew a big picture, which is called the Tree of Life.
The Tree of Life, that means, it's a chart that shows how life came, how man came from a basic living cell.
How man came from a basic living cell.
So from a living cell to more complex and more complex living organisms, till finally, they became monkeys, came and then man came.
So from a living cell to more complex and more complex living organisms, till finally, they became monkeys, came and then man came.
But Charles Darwin did not answer one question.
But Charles Darwin did not answer one question.
How did the living cell, single living cell come into existence?
How did the living cell, single living cell come into existence?
How did that single living cell come to life?
How did that single living cell come to life?
That question is not answered.
That question is not answered.
But you know, how modern scientists who do not believe in God are answering that question?
But you know, how modern scientists who do not believe in God are answering that question?
It is possible that aliens from other planets have come and seeded or sown this life into these living, into these cells.
But you know, how modern scientists who do not believe in God are answering that question?
Today, scientists are saying, are believing in aliens or people who are not humans, who exist in other planets, who came many, many years ago into the earth and seeded life into this world and went away.
But you know, how modern scientists who do not believe in God are answering that question? veerugrahangeli vaitugrahangeli vasigalundu avargal manidhargalallah andhavasigal indhu ulagathirkukvandhi indha anukkul konjavuyiray udivittuppoivittargal
is it true
adu unmaydana
is it possible is that there are aliens in other planets
matra grahangelile vaitugragavasigalundinbadhu nijamdana
did God create people other than human beings
manidharalladu veerugrahavasigalai devan undakirukraro
is it true that they came many years ago
anega aandugalkumun bhaay avargalindaandhathu unmaydano
about this we'll learn tomorrow
adakkuruthi nam naalay padikilam
you see that man there in this picture
ingikadaisikada padugirathana andhakpadathiparungal
that picture is a picture of an alien from another planet
andhakpadandhaan vaitugragathilirundu vandhadana oru vasigin padam
is is it true do such people exist
appadipattu eppeedipattu vasigal uyiroodindhavirindhi ikkaanappadugirargala
did God create them
devan avargalai uruvaakirukraro
what about their history
avarudiyasaruthiramdaanenna
tomorrow we will learn about it
naalaki idakkuruthi nam padikilam
I will tell you one thing
innu morukariyathinaan chalattu
these aliens are true
indhavaitugragavasigal unmaydana
but there is there are other big lies about them
anal avargalakuruthu matra periyapoyigalundu
from the word of God and from real life happenings we are going to see tomorrow what's happening in this world
indhu ulagathinadakrathana varkay kuruthu varkayale vaidthum vedavasinathinadippatayilum avargal yarindhi naalaki ungalakuthisalittharagre
I told you we have an enemy who is the sec at the second left four enemies one is evil spirits two I said I'll tell you later three I said instruments of Satan four innocent people trapped by Satan
nanirkinavaitchannen naanga pogdigal modhalaavudhu
first evil spirits
pullada avigal irandavudhu pogdiin naalaki nan ungalakuthisalittharagrinendu channen muntraavudhu satanaal proyodhanappadugirakarveegal naangaavudhu undu mariyada janam paavathinaale sataninaale eerkapatte avanvayamai pogiravarkal
this group two that's going to work against the church of God is these aliens
indhu devanude sabakkuvirudamai kriisigipodugirathu andhierandavudhu sathru dan indhavaitugraha vasigal
now many people think this is only part of movies and fiction stories it's not real
anega nannithukundrukragal idhissinema padangalukum kattukadigalukum naavalukum varigurathana kariyamdanendu nannikirargal
but we're going to see how true they are they exist today they are on earth today without anybody knowing
eppeedhanal ivargalidu unmaydanaendu eppeedhiidu unmayendu yarumarayamal eppeedhi ivargalindhu ulagathil kaanappadugirargalendu badhim naalaki nam kaanappogiro
shall we close our eyes
namnudhey kandlay mooduoma
Jesus is in our midst
eesinamudhey maathilidukrar
and he is making an announcement to us
indhika avan namakkurarivipay sollikundrukrar
a spiritual war is coming for the church of God
devanude sabakkur oravikriyayutham vandukundirukkathu
we are going to face evil powers
nam pisasins pullada valamayalay sandikappogiro
we are going to fight not against ordinary demons
sadhana pisasigalkuvirudamai nam porada pogidilai
we are going to fight against principalities and powers and rulers of the darkness of this world and spiritual wickedness in high places
naamthuraithanengaloodu madigarangaloodu vaanamandhalugunugula pullada senigaloodukunnam itthamsayapogiro
but today we are afraid of evil spirits
anal indhikinaam pullada avigalakhandu bayindukundrukro
when you see a person who's devil possessed or you see a bad dream you see a devil in a dream or you feel there's an evil spirit moving in your house you're scared
pisasipadithorunabari paththoodene andharaathini ponaoodene pisasayenivur soppanamaai kaankirai unde vitil pisasulavudhu polavunadukrayo
you are scared
nee bayindukundrukrai
but God wants to give us a spirit of boldness
devan namakkur daiyatiin aviyay tharavirumbukrar
God wants to take away that spirit of fear from our lives
namdhey jiviyathilirundu payathin aviyay eduthappoda devan virumbukrar
God wants to arm our minds with that boldness to face the adversary
sathruvay sandikakkudiyya daiyatiinale namdhey manadhim sindhim ayyamai tharikka devan virumbukrar
how many do not want to be afraid of the enemy
ethanai pair pis sathruvay kandu payappadamalirukkavendu virmubugirigal
such people put up your hands
appadipattu udhakaratthayuyathungal
when I see my adversary
ennu de sathruvay naan kaanumbodhu
when I see the powers of darkness
iralin valamayalay naan kaanumbodhu
I do not want to be afraid I want to be bold
naanadhey kandu payappadavirumbavilai daiyamai irukkavirumbukre
we human beings might be afraid as human beings
manidharalagay naam manidharalai irukkabadi naal bayindukundrukro
but remember if you have received the Holy Spirit there is a mighty God residing within you
anal oru kariyathinunnavil vaidthukollungal ningal perstutthaviyepetthukollumbodhu oru valamayulla devan namakkullay vaasampadikundrukrar
if you believe that that mighty God is within you
unakkullay andhavalamulla devan irukkaraanendu visvasipayaagil
that devil may not be afraid of you
pisasunne kandu payappadamalirukkala
but he will be afraid of that mighty God who is in you
unakkullay irukkathu daan andhavalamulla devanay kandu pisasay payappadugir
how many believe that you have a mighty God who is residing inside you
unakkullay valamulla devan irukkaraanendu ethanai pair visvasikri
how many of you believe that your body is the temple of a mighty God
ethanai pair visvasikri namdhey sariram valamulla devanin aalayamai irukkathu
then close your eyes
appadinadhaal kandlay moodu
you are going to feel the power of that mighty God inside you
andhavalamulla devanin valamayay namipparidhanabakkullay unarappogiro
now when you speak in tongues
ipparidhi ningal anyabashil pesungal
now when you speak in tongues
ipparidhi ningal anyabashil pesungal
ipparidhi ningal anyabashil pesumbodhu
pesumbodhu
you realize that that mighty God is inside you
unakkullay andhavalamulla devan irukkaraanendu unnaunarappoodiy
now when your body vibrates with the power of the Holy Spirit
unde sariramadhu perstutthavin valamayinale asikkappadubodhu
remember that's the mighty God inside you
unakkullay valamulla devan irukkaraanendu ninavil vaidthukolvay
if you have received the Holy Spirit
nee perstutthaviyepetthirindha
now give room to the Holy Spirit
perstutthavikidukodupayaagil
he's going to take away that spirit of fear inside you
unakkullay irukkathu daan andhavayathin aviyay avar eduthappoda pogiro
he's going to give you that spirit of boldness to face the adversary
sathruvay edirkay unakkudaven daiyatiin aviyay tharappogiro koliathai sandikavaidthadhana devan dhaavidhika abishayathakuduthaaray dhaavidhika daiyathakuduthaaray andhadevan nammayumipodhu daiyathaktharappogirar namdhey uyirathinallala namdhey barakramathinallala namdhey balathinallala enakkull oru periyaviyanavarkal irukkara avarinnaal naan oru senai kulpayindupovan avarmulamaha oru madalay naan thanduvan ethanai saedragal ethanai sathrukal ethanai mandravadigal ethanai pillisunigal kiyasidhalum yen devanall naanavigalay jaypan indhadaiyathodhu aviyanavakram kodupamaha periyadaven enakkull vaasamsayigundirukkar shabankathunakarabau shabankalamaniyathure ohriya shabankalamaniyathure yaaramau shabankalamaniyathure riya shabankalamaniyathure ohramau shabankalamaniyathure ah yes we pray we pray we praise you ohriya shabankalamaniyathure thank you Lord we thank you Jesus we thank you Jesus we praise you ohriya shabankalamaniyathure thank you Jesus we praise you vedathil oru vasana undu kartar eridundarulugara sathrukalsidarundupogum namdhey andhavarikuyutham avasyamilai namdhey andhavarikke a periyayidamgal avasyamilai utkarndukundirukkathu daan andhavar erumbinaalpoddum sathrukalsidarundupogargal idhethan vasana soligurathu ipparidhi anyabashigalakpesumbodhu ipparidhi aviyaniramamodhu ungalakullirukkara aviyanavarkal erumbukrar avar erumbomodhu sathrukalsidarundupogargal ohriya shabankalamaniyathure thank you Jesus thank you Jesus shabankalamaniyathure singathin melunnadandhu varisarpattayum nedipaa avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva singathin melunnadandhu varisarpattayum nedipaa avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva avasaithay kiraadikalankugavittam siragugalal mooduva avasaithay kiraadikalankugavittam ohram shabankalamaniyathure avasaithay kiraadikalankugavittam siragugalal mooduva avasaithay kiraadikalankugavittam siragugalal mooduva oru ne madam ningal ungalveettilirukkathana sathruvinnvalamay parthu bayindukundirukkri payappadavandham ungalakullirukkara devan thana periyavarkal avaree nam en siruray matthavandam ungalakullirukkara oru bommayallu ungalakullirukkara oru silayallu ungalakullirukkara sadhana manushanallu vaanathayum bhoomayum paditha devan satanudiyatalayam midithavarkal enakkull vaasamsayigar daiyamai vitikusaligal kartar jayathen namakkai suththa sudandramaha vaidthirukkar ningal sappangalamidipirgal ningal singalathin melanadapirgal kartar jayathan thandirukkar singathin melunnadandhu varisarpattayum nedipaa avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva singathin melunnadandhu varisarpattayum nedipaa avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva avanamattinimutunam dinada ungalakuthividigalay undu eesvin perstutthanaamattinungalakuthividigalay undu ohriya shabankalamaniyathure varisarpattayum nedipaa avanamattinimutunam dinada unne viduvittuka thiduva 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 hallelujah rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba hallelujah dhikrana rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba dhikrana rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba hallelujah 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 devasamutthu kaligurav hallelujah devasamutthu dalambalop dhikrakala hadidakala balsadakala dhikrakala 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 hallelujah shabankathunakarabau rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba dhikrakala rabbaka shaba dhikrakala hallelujah hallelujah dhikrakala rabbaka shaba hallelujah hallelujah rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba dhikrakala rabbaka shaba dhikrakala rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba hallelujah dhikrakala rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba dhikrakala hallelujah dhikrakala 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 hallelujah dhikrakala rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba hallelujah dhikrakala rabbaka shaba hallelujah hallelujah ame kartari stotripaum stotram 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 kartaridhu kutthudanidhi derandavudhal kutthathay kartare barabait vahivit kartar sarvaalubuladdevanage parlogar sarva vahimiodhu sarva saedragoodu kuudhe avravadavatthin avrathikarabulavari valabulavari vichidukkavidhal kartari stotripaum ame hallelujah praise the lord hallelujah stotram 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 indha baravadilunno avde samuthin avde padathilabarthiruthu kartaridhu vasanugale kettukudukpakkum slakkum thandavidhal kartari stotripaum ame stotram 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 ame kartaridhu vahimiyalakki rishamuthukullage kartaridhu varthale kettukumidiyage kartaridhu kuduvichadavidhal stotripaum stotram hallelujah rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba rabbaka shaba hallelujah Hallelujah, amen Illidhritthul kattaridhvarthepesin kattaridhthassunadavillad, ghribillad, bishetral, naritthamidinala stotripo Hallelujah, praise the Lord, hallelujah, hallelujah Stotram, 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 stotram Amen, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Idhibhutthunakkiyam mattubeyuulladu idhivulladh bhoodhunakkiyam kuddangalilai idhuvaradhuvanuvaram Vantavargalu bhoodhunakkiyam thodarchiyagapandhugulam idhugulladh devasabutthadhavukum kattaridhuvichimidiay stotripo, stotram Hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Yesuwee stotram, yesuwee stotram Stotram, 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 stotram Naalay kaaneedhunadhaan andhavalivaralidh kuttathay kattar porupadukavendu varakudinada Ellaavalivaralidh idhuthadhey millamal vandhu andhukuttathil pandhuvaram Avargal aasilvadhamaram, jeevanadheyum, gharanadheyum kattaridhavyaavare vudavichimidiay kattare stotripo, stotram Hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord Hallelujah, stotram, 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 stotram Varidhugalakhaamattubelladh varidhugalidh kuttathil pandhuvavendu varjikiradha Arvyaadaviswasi, arvyaadapudiyam, nambhavend, saudhriyam, yavudhupandhuvavendu nagalabaiyalaikiram Aina naalay kuttathil varakudiyal, ellarikathil kundu daasilvadikumidiay stotripo Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah Arvyaadaviswasi, arvyaaddevanidh pillayen tagalikaragamilukumidiyadh varidhugalai Sandhitthu ipudhu avargalakhaalukkutthamavadinala Pudiyavargal idhthavalivaralayindhal ningaladhitthuvidiay bakhetthulapudirigal Anepukeleki ellaavalivaralidh vandhu naalay kuttathil pandhuvettu avargal richipadhey Pudiyajeevanapara, pudiyabishagapara vudavichimidiay stotripo Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, stotram, 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 stotram Neelalay baalikathiruputhum naalay minnubaha ulle baalay kuttachiriyagala Aindha napthi aindhikidhatthil arabba bahu varakudivadiyavari kattaridhurithalertukumidha Devasabutthil kundichayikumidiay baalikuttathil kattar aasilvadikumidiay kattare stotripo Amen, praise the Lord, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Stotram, 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 stotram Minnubhuvanurupurupadukreella unde prayadugalil pochil varathul kattaridhukudhukakumidiay devasabutthadhumidiay stotripo Hallelujah, stotram, 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 stotram Vidhakunaruparshutaviyavurukai stotripo Praise the Lord, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Elagadh bahivikattarukuduthu stotripo, stotram, 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 stotram Hallelujah Jaubalbo Anbanapidaviyam shottirangathavi kattavi engalayum thesamidapagathirulagale neeshithu Indhodhamana kothagal aayuthapadukithandhu palathadheykaran, sholnagalayum anugaramaga maathithandhu Engalmatthira indhayikum peshinadhalavathseedukai uddakiriyedukai shottirangathavi Varappogra adivilayirundhu thandhanidhurundhu ratchikumidiyaga, meetkumidiyaga Orukotham mansargal unde raachyathukadha thayidipadukumidiyaga Kattavi indhanalakadhal unde suvisesam aarivikappattakirivakai shottiram Adhikarun unde taasanipalapadukitha, preeswana padukitha abishayikthakirivakai shottirangathavi Uddavathsayanadhi uyirpikakoodiyadhu, ratchikakoodiyadhu, chirithikakoodiyadhu, shohamakakoodiyadhu Manusharachirithikakoodiyad, valamay cheevanamulla vaadseyarikumidiyala shottirangathavi Andhavathsayanadhi thodandakiriyanadapikavu orukotham mansargal unde raachyathukadha thayidipadukumidiyam Maathramal, devasinkasanthikantidh thendukulappattakothathakaga Saathanu avade seynayum, valamayum, muladhikarathayum, valamay vediipadukthanaalu Kattavi engalakkulayirundhu chayakodukumidiyaga, uyirpikumidiyaga, phalapadukumidiyaga Sinkasanthikantidh orukothaththayidipadukumidiyaga Engalabishayikthere engalakkulavashamandhiridhakadha shottirangathavi Andhapadiy orukotham mansargal devasinkasanthikantid thayidipadukum Yesu vediipadumpodhu umakkumidh magan nirejuttavenduvi Adhikarun engal thayidipadukumidh phalamulla karathilopadukiram Yesu naaplakaykuram pidavi Amen, amen, stotram Namblekatra Yesu Kristvinthiruvay pidavaa hi devanadhatum Parushuthavi avade aykupadu havrulamariroodum saranaparushuthavakloodum bidhuvanidekumidh padha Amen, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah